Good. Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the Lapeur County Council regular meeting for January 25th to order. If you haven't done so, please silence your phone. After the pledge of allegiance, I would ask everybody to pause for a moment of silence for former Council Attorney Don Boger. He served in many positions over the years, including County Council Attorney Solidways, Chief Deputy Prosecutor for Lapeur County, and Lapeur County Fair Board. He finished his career with Lapeur City. We'd also like a moment of silence for Jackie Santana Gonzer, the sister of former Council Member Jeff Santana, and for all the people who've lost the battle with COVID, and for those still recovering from COVID and cancer. So if we could, Mr. Yagelski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Auditor. Councilman Garner.
Terry, is he on?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Garner, present.
I'm trying to mute the phone that isn't working, I guess.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Yagelski.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
And Councilwoman Grammerosa. Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Is she on? No, I don't see her. Darlene is. No, this. Connie on?
Councilwoman Connie Grammerosa.
I don't.
You have six of seven.
Connie did not connect through Zoom.
All right, so we have six.
Six members present.
Thank you. Approval of the January 25th, 2021 agenda.
I'd like to make a motion, but I'd also like to add the appointment to the boards. I'm not sure where we want to be placing that. Do we do that after the approval of liaison assignments?
Yeah, that'd be a good place for it.
Okay. With that being added.
Just for the record, if I may, Your Honor, the Councilman, under item number four, new business, request for county council appointment of board members, or?
But it's not on this agenda.
Where these?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
It's number four under new business.
I'm sorry, it's under new business. Thank you for the correction. There is something else?
Yes, sir. Ten-four. Mr. President, also like resolution number 2021-2.
Thank you. And then we also need to remove the Lapeur County Planner who was on the agenda for matching. Correct?
That is correct.
We need to remove it for 996,974. So we're taking that off at this time. Anything else? So the motion.
Second. Motion's fine.
Second by Mr. Yagelski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is the approval of the November 23rd mini-minute meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with one minor change on page five. Under the liaison reports, it was under Councilman Garner. It's FMEC, not FEMC.
Correct.
Out of all of that, that's what I found.
She's not part of our meeting.
Noted.
She's not part of our meeting.
Well, she is?
Yes, sir.
All right. So there's a motion for the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes as corrected.
Abstain.
Let the record show that Councilman Grammerosa is on Zoom now.
On your.
So just so that the record show.
Mr. President, let the record show that Mr. Cunningham abstained because I was not present for the November 23rd meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Noted.
Next item is approval of the December 9th, 2020 special meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenhour. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining?
Noted.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the January 4th reorganizational minute meeting minutes. What's your preference?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Yagelski. Is there any other questions?
I thought it was by Mr. Mullenhour because I didn't get a chance to say that.
It was.
It was Mullenhour.
Didn't I? Did I say Rosenbaum?
Okay.
Mullenhour.
Got to let somebody else do it once.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the January 13th, 2021 special meeting minutes. Bless you.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yagelski. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Department head reports. Any department heads that would like to report?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Yes, this is Commissioner Rosensky?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, how you doing tonight? I just saw on your agenda that you have the annual budget for Lapeur County Office of Community and Economic Development. They are right in the office right next to the commissioners. So I see Tony, Matt, and Bailey very regularly throughout the week. They keep me up to date on what's going on. I just wanted to speak very briefly here on their efforts. They're still working on that Love's Travel Plaza and the sewer extension. The KIP, we've got two potential rail projects that are finally starting to move. Of course, we all know about the Corsicana Mattress Company. They have some new TIF areas under consideration for future development. They are continually improving the expansion and retention program. In fact, we had one, I think Randy, you were there with us when we did, by Zoom, matter of fact, with the E-PAC extension. They finished the two small business stimulus packages. We actually had a potential project on 39 North where, with some potential investors, where Tony actually had a drone to show the investors the different plots available up there for that. So I just wanted to speak on the behalf that they're doing an amazing job. It's really heartwarming to see our investment in that office paying off with a lot of new projects, and very proud of what all they're doing there. So just wanted to speak on that briefly. So thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rosensky. Is there anybody else from the public, or department heads? Sorry. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of liaison assignments. I sent out a list, I think at the end of last week. Is there a motion?
Did we fix that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Mullenhour.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any other questions? If anybody wants to trade, talk to the other person, and then just let me know and we can get it approved at a meeting. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is we're going to do the appointments of open boards that the council has. The first one we're going to do is the Michigan City Library. Bear with me while I pull up the sheet. Judy Lang has expressed, she's the one that had it. She has stated that she is no longer going to be on the library board. So at this time, is there any nominations?
Mr. President, in light of the fact that Stacy Benning has withdrawn her previous application for this board assignment.
Right.
I would like to speak very highly of her application as well, and I think she would be an outstanding appointment for future boards. But I believe that leaves us with Dale. And in light of the fact that she is the only applicant that I'm aware of, Dale Cooper, I would not make that nomination. And she has endorsement letters from Don Glossinger of the library, and also from Jack Arnett, her present employer at the Convention Tourism Bureau.
Mr. President, I'd like to second that.
So motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Mullenhour. Councilman Grammerosa, did you second that too, or no?
No.
Okay. I thought I heard. I'm having trouble hearing what's going on up there. So are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you.
Sorry. As a point of order, we are doing the boards and the board nominations now as opposed to a new business, correct?
You know what? I wrote it on here. Yes, we're doing them now.
So just.
So we're rearranging, yeah. So we're rearranging that.
Just so the public knows what's going on, that's all.
I'd written it on my agenda ahead of time, so.
Very good.
So we'll just continue with that. Is that okay? Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Good. All right. Next item is the Alcohol Beverage Board.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Mr. President, okay.
I would like to make a recommendation after talking with our attorney that we always reconsider the person that's on any board as a matter of courtesy or respect, and consider them our first nomination. I would like the board's approval to make that a standard policy for all board assignments in the future.
Oh, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Gardner. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? So now the alcoholic, alcoholic board, beverage board.
Mr. President.
Well, it says alcoholic beverage board. Sorry about that.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to make a nomination for Mr. Ron Schaefer to the Alcohol Beverage Board, which he has served on different numerous boards throughout the county in the past.
Mr. Gardner nominated Ron Schaefer. Is there a second?
Mr. Cunningham, as a point of order, Mr. Cunningham, did you ask that to, that the?
Another candidate.
Okay. So as I understand it, Mr. Stimley is already on the board, and he's looking to. Stimley.
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 Will be our first vote, correct?
Yes, okay.
So therefore, we don't need to nominate?
He's automatic, right. He's automatically nominated.
Okay, thank you.
Is there?
Second.
Second for Ron Schaefer, seconded by Mr. Yagelski. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Dwayne Miller.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum for Dwayne Miller. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate, reinstate, to reinstate John Stimley, who's presently on the board.
Thank you. So just for clarification here, Mr. Cunningham made a motion that if the previous person is on the board and they want to stay on there, they're automatically nominated?
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear that that well, but okay.
I just wanted to clarify that. So we already had Mr. Stimley on our list.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Right now, we have three nominations. We have John Stimley, Ron Schaefer, and Dwayne Miller. Is there anybody else? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. How do you want to do this?
Each one at one at a time.
Yes, one position. Then you're going to have to go Mr. Stimley first. Stimley. Mr. Stimley first, excuse me.
Stimley, whatever you.
And if he gets the vote, then you don't need to go any further.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagelski.
Just as a point of order, I had it made last year. There was some misunderstanding. Just John Stimley, this is the father. He worked, he owned two of the taverns in Michigan City. This is because the son has jobs in Michigan City, and people question that. So this is the father's position, running for the board, not the son's. This is John, not Johnny.
John Junior.
As we know him, right.
Any other questions or comments? So the first one we'll call the roll on is Mr. Stimley. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilman.
What?
Now, I'm going to ask, we're going to do this alphabetically correct.
So I will clarify that what we are doing is, assuming it's the council's pleasure, is that a random number generator was used to create lists of council people, and only I and my deputy are aware of it. And so these numbers are generated completely randomly off of Google, a software, a Google, a website. And so they're going to be unpredictable, which is something that a few council people talked to me about. If you want it done differently, we'll do it.
Councilman. The first meeting, we went alphabetically, so now.
No, 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 we did not do that. Are you talking about alphabetically for the nominations or the council members?
No, alphabetically for us voting. Isn't that how we did it?
No.
For the first meeting? The first meeting, didn't we have a motion where we were going to do it, we were going to vote alphabetically?
I believe we did do it alphabetically.
No, we didn't. We did it by the order of nomination.
Not for, not for the nominations, but for the actual voting.
When we called the vote for the council members. What order the council members.
Yeah, I was last.
Right. Should the council members be voting when he calls the roll alphabetically, as we have in the past, and then he just rotates one so that it's not the same person necessarily all the time? Or how do you want to do it?
Random generator is the best by far, in my opinion.
So it wasn't okay for the first meeting, but now we're going to do it this way? Okay. Sounds good. Just so that we know that we did it one way the first time, and now we're changing it.
I will take responsibility. As the auditor, it was the way that I, as a newly elected auditor, had intended to do it, which I thought was fair. Some council people pointed out, it's not fair because whoever's got the last name, the first name is, you know, reveals his cards or whatever. So I, this, after some discussion with a few council people, this was a method that was deemed to be fairer, but it's up to the pleasure of the council.
Mr. President.
Okay, but there was no problem with fairness on the first meeting. So, okay, we'll proceed.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham.
In light of the fact that our first meeting was on January 4th, the first day in office for Mr. Stabos, I don't want to pin the blame on him. I think that.
Oh, well, he wasn't the one that made the motion.
Excuse me, Mrs. Grammerosa. Mr. Cunningham. That's what I'm going to do now to make sure this is clear. I'm going to make a motion that we use a random generator for the order of the vote on all future votes until. We change that. Till, yeah, until next year's reorganization meeting, for all I care. I think we should do it continuously. So I'll make that motion now to clear the air.
We have a motion by Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments on this motion?
Does this generator work for Lotto tickets?
Yeah.
Does this generator work for Lotto tickets? I'm just curious.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? So that will be the way it's done from here on out. So.
Was there any opposition?
No, not, I didn't hear any.
Randy?
Yes.
I believe the previous auditor did it this way, also for, geez, I'm going to say her eight years in office. So I think this is the proper way to do it.
Right. I think she rotated everybody.
She already.
Yeah, but anyway. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any other items? Oh, Mr. Clerk, call the roll. I think that's what we're doing. Mr. Auditor, not Clerk, sorry.
You are voting on the Alcohol Beverage Board nomination.
First person that we're voting on is Steve, John Stimley.
Councilman Garner.
Nay.
Councilman Yagelski.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Grammerosa.
Nay.
Next item. You got three votes?
Three yea. Three yea, four nays.
All right. So the next name is Ron Schaefer. Clerk? Mr. Auditor, I'm sorry.
Councilman Yagelski.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Garner.
Aye.
Three ayes, four nays.
All right. We'll try the third one. Dwayne Miller. Mr. Auditor, would you call the roll?
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Yagelski.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Councilman Garner.
Nay.
Four nays, three ayes. Motion fails.
So what's your preference? So, so we'll start over until we, we get four votes. So next one again is Mr. John Stimley. You got enough auto, randomly generated numbers there to make this happen?
For now. Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Yagelski.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
And Councilman Garner.
Nay.
Four nays, three ayes. Motion fails.
Next one is Ron Schaefer.
Councilman Cunningham. It's the way it came up, sorry.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Councilman Garner.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Yagelski.
Nay.
Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Aye.
And Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Four nays, three ayes. Motion fails.
Next one is Dwayne Miller.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Nay.
Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagelski.
Nay.
Councilman Garner.
Nay.
And Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Five nays, two ayes. Motion fails.
So at some point, do we put them in a hat and pull one out?
One's out.
Huh?
Second one's on.
So we're going to take.
Second one's out.
Low vote.
Yes, that's out.
So now what are we down to?
Stimley and Ron Schaefer.
So we're down to Mr. Stimley, Mr. Schaefer. So. So does everybody understand that the low vote getter? Is out. So. Everybody understand? So we're going to vote?
Yes.
The next two votes.
On two.
We're down to two. So we're down to John Stimley and Ron Schaefer.
A point of order, the attorney was suggesting we're voting on Stimley. I'm just not clear. Are we voting on Stimley? Are we, are the council people choosing between one of the two candidates and naming the candidate?
Order. Minus the first one, just like you're doing.
I'm sorry?
Stimley starts off again.
Stimley starts off, okay.
All right. Mr. Auditor.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Garner.
Nay.
Councilman Yagelski.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Four nays, three ayes. Motion fails.
Now Ron Schaefer.
Ron Schaefer, okay.
Well, this could be four, three, two. It could be, I'm just, I think he's still got a, should be.
You're voting on Ron Schaefer, correct?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Councilman Yagelski.
Nay.
Councilman Garner.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
Mr. President, in the past, when we've had it, it's four, three again. In the past, we've had it, we're, you had a tie. So at this point, I think, in the order we're doing it, everybody states a name.
I'm sorry, it's four ayes, three nays.
That's why I asked you to tie.
Mr. Schaefer one.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Because I asked.
No, I appreciate it. All right.
If that comes up again.
Next one is the Animal Control Board, which currently has, it's actually a council appointment, but I had Dennis Carroll, senior, was helping out on that. And so it's actually a county council.
Appointment.
Appointment. So it's, 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 it's actually a county council member, so I'm the liaison there. So that's where that's at. Next item is the Lapeur County Board of Construction Review.
Question?
Yes, Mr.
Before we proceed here, I want to make sure I understand what we just did on the Animal Control Board.
So I'm going to be on there, be in the liaison.
Okay. And then if you don't attend, you're actually sending someone else in your place? Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
So do all of us have that same option if we're the liaison?
No, no, no. This last year, he was on there.
That's my question.
This year, I'm going to come back on there.
100% in favor of that. Thank you, sir.
Dennis Carroll is not going to be there. No.
Thank you.
Right.
So it defaults to you, President?
What's the question?
It falls to you, Mr. President.
Being the council liaison, that's who's normally there? Last year, the council voted to put Dennis Carroll on there in my place, being the council liaison. So. Does that answer your question?
So it was yours. You gave it to Dennis, Mr. Dennis, and now you're taking it, now you're going to be in it.
Correct. With the council's approval, last year.
What was the, what was the reason? I don't recall, Randy.
He wanted to be, he wanted to serve on a board and do it. So I was still in very contact, you know, with the Animal Control Board and everything. So that was the only reason. Does anybody have any objections to that?
Nope.
All right. Next one is the Lapeur County Board of Construction Review.
That shows that it's commissioners.
That's a commissioners.
So that you're not going to have an appointment on there.
We do not have an appointment on there. I don't know why it's highlighted on my sheet. 911 Advisory Board is also, that's my liaison assignment. So I will be serving on that one. I'm just listing off the ones that we have. We already done FMEC. We already done FMEC the other night. Next one would be the Park and Rec Board. There's a Ronald Knickerhamm?
Yeah, Knickerhamm, yes. He's served, he's served.
Right.
In the past.
So what's your pleasure? His, his appointment is, are there any nominations? Well, it's an automatic nomination. Is there any other nominations besides?
No other nomination this time for me.
So is that a motion to move nominations be closed?
Motion to close nominations.
Second by Mr. Yagelski. All those in favor for Ronald, give me the last name again.
Knickerhamm.
Knickerhamm. To continue to serve on the Lepore County Park and Rec Board, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
So wait a minute, we just had no other nominations, is that what just happened?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Next item is the Lepore County Planning Commission. And Mr. Cunningham, Councilman Cunningham, it's a council appointment, or it's usually the liaison over there. And that's been assigned, Mr. Cunningham currently serves on there, so I would request that the council appoint Councilman Cunningham to that position.
Do you need a motion to approve?
I do. Is that a motion?
If you need a motion to approve, yes.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Yagelski.
What was that for? Cause I couldn't catch it.
Lepore County Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So last year, Councilman Sean Quinn was the liaison and he served on that board. So this year, it's assigned to Mr. Cunningham, so he would like to stay on there. Is there anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, on the list would be the Peta Bola, which is the Lepore County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Currently on there, we have Bob Bailey and Jamal Ajmi are the ones that currently serve on there. And I think the.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint both of those gentlemen.
Second.
Got multiple seconds.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Mullenhour, seconded by Mr. Cunningham, I think, and Mr. Rosenbaum.
Uh, no, Mr. Gardner.
Is there any other questions? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor of reappointing Bob Bailey and Jamal Ajmi, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President.
Mr. Yagelski.
I'd just like to make, I know we got a lot of paperwork here, and it's very confusing on this type of stuff, but we, it should state that we had a person apply for. I think that out of common courtesy, we should allow the vote to happen. And again, I apologize, we got a lot of paper here, work here, so.
Yep.
Yes.
And we do appreciate anybody and everybody that put their name in.
But I missed it because I'm sorry.
No, I didn't see the name, so I'm looking for it.
I think it was Mr. Hassan DeBeja.
I would ask, I would ask that we reconsider the vote, at least, at least ask for nominations for Mr., if anybody applies.
Mr. President? I thought, I thought, Mr. President.
Yes, point of order well taken. I know exactly what you're gonna say. His, his appointment letter came to us, but it's actually a commissioner's appointment. I think if you look at the bottom or something, that's where the confusion came in and.
I stand corrected.
So Mr. Mullenhour and I had.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenhour, I stand corrected.
Thank you. I think that should be with the commissioners, yes.
Unless he was, unless he was removed from the commission, but as far as I know, he's still on, he's listed on there, on that list that came out today.
Mr. Schultz is here, he's verified that. Mr. Mullenhour?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so the next one would be the Regional Sewer and Water District. There's a Clay Howard, his term expired at the end of 2020. And Gene Jonas, who served on there for many, many years, had passed away later in the year. I don't believe we re filled that vacancy, so, or if we did, I don't remember who.
They didn't request it.
Yeah. Are there any nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cunningham.
I would nominate Dwayne Miller.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to nominate Dwayne Miller? For one of the positions? Are there any other nominations? We have two positions. Clay Howard is on the, is nominated because he's currently serving. And then Dwayne Miller. Is there anybody else?
Make a motion to close nominations, not hearing anybody else.
Second.
Motion is second to close nominations. All those in favor of Clay Howard and Dwayne Miller, serving on the Regional Sewer and Water Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next one would be the Solid Waste Board.
Point of order, can you clarify, maybe I wasn't listening, but Gene Jonas was.
Gene Jonas has passed away.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Yes.
Right, he's no longer, yeah.
Unfilled position.
Last, I think last fall sometime, but he was on there for a long, long time and very instrumental in making things happen out there, so. Next one is the Solid Waste, who's the liaison?
It's Mike Mullenhour.
Yes.
Right, so, so he would be in the liaison appointment to that, he would stay on there. Correct? I mean, he's, who's the liaison now? Who's got the appointment?
He stayed.
Him?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, so we don't need to do any.
For four years, I think.
We don't need to do anything with that one, then. Uh, I think that's it. Is there anybody else that, anybody can think of that we missed?
It's on my list.
I think that's it.
I, I apologize for the confusion over Hassan DeBeja.
Which one?
The parks.
We did that. Great, alright. Alright.
Onto.
Liaison reports. Mr. Rosenbaum, would you like to lead off with the?
I'm just gonna pass now and pick up next time.
Alright, Mr. Yagelski.
Yeah, Mr. President, I know that, we didn't have, we did not know who our, some of our liaisons were, so I just want to point out that there's some question, concerns and misinformation. When I started working in the council, there used to be a separate table for, for the newspapers, radio, media, everybody. They would come and interview you, they ask questions. We had, we had the thing we brought about the bridge, on Franklin Street Bridge. I'd just like to reinstate that there was some misinformation. Nobody called me, nobody, I don't think, someone called any of the members here that are on the council, Mr. President, if there is. They wrote an article about it. Unfortunately, I don't like the way the media does this stuff now, but this is what we're stuck with. So just so everybody know that, we just can't replace this bridge. The bridge is like an antique bridge. It's, they call it a select bridge, however we want to use terminology. That means that we would have to find either A, a source to put it somewhere else, maybe down the river where it wouldn't be open and closed, but somebody could still use it, look at it and use it. Or B, we could build one beside it. Or C, with permission, you could use, try to use, you have some of the facade implemented into the new style of bridge. That's, that's not our choice. We had to work under state guidelines and that, so we are not tearing down any bridge. There was never a word about that. When we look at new bridges, we're gonna have to look at our legislators and see what they're gonna allow us to do. Just, I'm sorry, if there was misinformation, again, I wish the media would cover it better, I wish they were here, I wish we had a better presence, so that those things don't get misconstrued. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yagelski. Mr. Cunningham, you have anything?
Not yet. I will attend the Plan Commission meeting tomorrow night.
Thank you. Mr. Mullenhour?
Yes, I got, well, since our last regular meeting in, on November 2020, we had a total of 20 items, but for fear that most likely I'd get a lot of hate mail from you all, I would, I'm just going to report on two of them. The first one is January 13th, give me a second, January 13th, I attended the Lepore County Solid Waste District Board Meeting. And what I want to report on that is there will be a public hearing on that possibility of raising the fees. And that's going to be February 10th at 6:30 PM. And then we'll have a board meeting, well, it's a public meeting, public hearing, and then our board meeting will immediately follow that. I know we've done quite a bit of discussion on it, and from what I understand, we may also have a workshop on it very soon, before the 10th, because to try and scrutinize some, some things, some figures. Last thing we want to do is raise the, the fees, but the landfill is really basically ran out of money, so and we sure don't want to, at the same time, we sure don't want to reduce services if we can help that, because I think, I think we're pretty fortunate in this county to have all the services that we've got with curbside pickup. And I know it's a great improvement with that landfill out there for all the public to bring their refuge, so. And you know, if we start reducing services, then we start finding things along the road again, and I think it's been pretty, pretty good since, since that's been taken care of properly. So there will be a public hearing though on the 10th at 6:30. The last thing I have is January, yeah, January 19th, I attended the Lepore County Board of Health Quarterly Meeting. And the resignation of Health Administrator, and I think I mentioned that at our last meeting, or somebody did, Tony Mancuso. He'll be leaving the end of February, I forget the exact date, but anyway, he's gonna be working with the new administrator. And of course, there was applications during the month of, I think, November, December. HR worked on scrutinizing them, interviews by that board. And make a long story short, they recommended and voted at that meeting on the 19th to give the new admin, the administrator's position to, it's a present employee. I think she's a PAT 6 right now in the Health Department, and it's Amanda Loner, I believe is how she pronounces her last name. So that is all I think I've got right now that needed to be reported on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenhour. Mr. Grammerosa, you have anything? You're muted. Oops, sorry.
Sorry about that. I said, yes, I attended January 21st, the Lepore County Regional Sewer and Water District meeting. And they are going ahead, they're working in Rolling Prairie, and they should have that sewer system, the second phase done by August of this year. So people will be able to voluntarily hook up to the sewer between August and January 1st. And then after January, it will be mandatory. It's a, it's a district that actually, it's self-funded, so they don't have to come to us for money. So it pretty much, it's, it's by itself, and it's the only one that I was able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
I'm gonna pass, but Mark and I have both been placed on the buildings with, which Larry has graciously taken all of us around to look at the building. We're considering on our agenda tonight, and after reviewing it with him, I think we're all understanding that it is a possibility, so that's it.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna pass for sake of time, so, any correspondence, Mr. Auditor?
No.
Great. Alright, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First item is Resolution Number 2021-1, a resolution of Lepore County Council declaring a portion of Lepore County, Indiana Economic Revitalization Area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1. Mr. Tony Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. It is truly my genuine pleasure to present to you for your consideration of declaring the shown property. The map here, which identifies the subject area that I am referring to. I would also be remiss if I did not point out, while we're not giving the formal presentation this evening, I noticed that the both company representatives have taken it upon themselves to join. I would imagine to answer any questions, but our intention is to give you a thorough and very comprehensive presentation during and prior to the public hearing. This is a, the first in a two-step process pursuant to the Indiana Code that you just referred to, I won't repeat. And we would ask that the public hearing be set for your next county regularly scheduled county council meeting on the 22nd of February, if I'm not mistaken, at 6:30 PM. And again, we would request that, at that time, that a public hearing be held. We will handle the publication and notices, and then present at that time, a detailed statement of benefits. Councilman Rosenbaum has brought to my attention that Exhibit D was excluded in the application. We are, my understanding, and I'm trying to follow the exact and customary process, that's the way this has been handled in the past. So we are going to be highly prepared to present this in great detail at the next county council meeting. But I would also just like to add, this is a longtime Lepore County company, and we would urge your support this evening, so that we can get to the second and most important meeting of this, of this presentation in an attempt to retain this very notable manufacturing company in our county.
So could you give us a little background on who the company is and what, just so that the public knows what we're talking about?
Oh, sure, yep. E-Pac Machinery Inc. is a, is a manufacturer of automated electronic liquid filling equipment. They employ, as of today, 64 permanent full-time manufacturing jobs. And an approximate payroll last year of approximately $2.4 million. And it, I feel like I'd be doing a disservice to go into any more great detail. We, we hope to have an automated presentation that will be.
We're gonna show the people at home.
Oh, sure, yeah, very good. That's a, that's a great idea.
Go ahead, Tony, keep talking.
The subject property that we're referring to is located on Highway 39. It is a, a property that, with the addition of the small parcel that's being added, they will have the ability to add approximately 30,000 square feet of new manufacturing space. But the, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the, what's driving this entire package in our presentation this evening is to work with our existing manufacturing base in Lepore County in an attempt to retain them and outcompete our neighboring state of Michigan, which would be a likely candidate for an investment of, of a significant, significant nature. So we are, and as a result of a very intense meeting with the company ownership, went through a comprehensive proposal in the business retention expansion visit. And we, we very much look forward to presenting to you. and we, we very much look forward to presenting to you at the next, the next regularly scheduled council meeting, the detailed proposal. So, hopefully that gives, gives the public an idea of, of what we're talking about here.
Do the owners want to speak?
Excuse me?
Do the owners want to speak?
Would, would Mr. Swiderski be interested in making any comment at this point? I know, as I mentioned, Mr. President, I know it's, this evening is, is step one in a two-step process, and I think Commissioner Mrazinski did a tremendous job in, in giving a snapshot overview. We, this year, I believe we're in a, just a tremendous position to be kicking off 2021 with a, such a significant potential expansion with a company that has such a, an impact on Lepore County. We, while folks in the media get excited about new industry and new job creation, we, as a responsible economic development entity, you start with taking care of business at home. That's exactly what this is doing. You, you take care of what you have first, and we have been in discussions with this company now over the period of the last 18 months, and doing everything we possibly can, working cooperatively with the State of Indiana's Economic Development Corporation, all of the entities that assist in training highly skilled, advanced manufacturing jobs. And I would just applaud, at every step of the way, they've been extremely welcoming to our efforts, and we're fortunate to be in the position to consider this application this evening. So, again, just in conclusion, tonight is step one in a two-step process. For those looking at home, what you see on the map here, and I appreciate the council attorney for getting our, our photos straight there, and, but what you're seeing is Highway 39, for physical orientation, this is in the backyard of Lepore's Municipal Airport. The small parcel to the north, which is referred to in the application there and on the resolution as the northerly parcel, is just slightly less than two acres, and that's presenting this opportunity to, to make this 30,000 square foot expansion and allow us to outcompete the State of Michigan and retain this significant advanced manufacturer in, in Lepore County, Indiana.
Right. Does the owner want to talk?
Tony, would you like to make any comment at all? And again, clarifying, we'll, we'll be doing our detailed presentation at, at your next meeting.
Hello, everybody. Basically, Jeff and myself are here answering questions you may have, but echoing on Mr. what, what Mr. Rodriguez said, our business has been very fortunate over the last 10 years as far as growth as well. During this challenge of COVID, where other businesses are seeing a downturn, we've been fortunate with an upturn in our normal book of business, as well as we've had an increased book of business for sanitizers and disinfectant machines to bottle that type of equipment. The demand right now that we have for space is very painful because of that uptick, but we've already been planning an expansion, and I've been looking, as Mr. Rodriguez said, to Michigan and Buffalo because we also have two facilities that I'm, a facility in each state from those areas, and I'm also the president over. So, we've been vetting those just to combine some efforts and some synergies with those businesses, businesses and areas if it made sense. So, that's what brings us to reaching out to the county on where we're at today.
Great. Thank you very much. And I attended the Zoom meeting that we had with the, the owners and Commissioner Mrazinski, and they gave us a little tour of the facility, and, and it's, it's just incredible what they do out there. So, happy to do what we can to help them out, to keep them here in Lepore County. So, yeah. With that?
Question?
Well, question?
Have they received previous abatement?
I don't believe that this company has ever received a, an abatement in Lepore County.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Yagowski?
A real quick question now with this. I welcome a new company. That's great. With all the information coming out now with Illinois and the high tax situation, with their, with their severe restrictions, people moving out, closing of businesses, have we seen an uptake, especially Northwest Indiana, about any inquiries about manufacturing or that type of thing that we've, that have changed? Because I know Michigan has seen an increase in that, so...
From Illinois?
From Illinois, yes, sir.
Would, to answer your question, councilman, the, it's, it would be described better as a spike, not an uptick. It has been a significant spike, and it's a very, puts us in a unique and very fortunate position. I, I use that term, and I was going to be presenting a little bit later in the agenda. You, you know, in economic development, you've, you must have your homework done before that prospect arrives, and...
I understand that, but this has been arriving for quite some time.
Correct.
On the uptick, because that's why I thought, considered an uptick.
It is, and COVID's driven a significant amount of that because of the supply chain challenges.
Definitely.
I, I would just add, Mr. President, so the request would be supportive of this declaratory resolution, and, and a public hearing be set for the, the next council meeting.
Mr. President, make a motion to read by title only Resolution Number 2021-1.
By title only, Mr. G, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, by title only?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, all council members. And thank you, company representatives, for taking your time this evening.
Thank you. We're not done yet. Still got to vote. Mr. Auditor, would you read by title only?
This is a declaratory resolution of the Lepore County Council declaring a portion of Lepore County, Indiana, an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Now, this is a motion to approve supporting it so that we can bring it to the next stage. Thank you.
Correct. Yep. Thanks for the clarification. Any other questions or comments? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. So, we'll set this for our February 22nd meeting for here, for a public comment.
And Mr. Rodriguez, you're going to take care of the notice requirements, correct?
We sure will. Yeah, thank you, in, in cooperation with their, their corporate counsel.
Great.
For accuracy.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2021-2. Mr. Yagowski?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to have you read in its contents because there will be some other major discussions that goes along to either approve or disapprove it so the public has some access to it.
Sounds good. Does anybody have a problem with that? If you're not, Mr. Yagowski?
Okay. Resolution of Lepore County Council establishing policies and procedures to protect decorum and foster effective administration of public meetings. Whereas the Lepore County Council, the council, serves as a fiscal body of Lepore County, Indiana, the county, and, whereas the council conducts council business during its regular schedule and, if necessary, special meetings, all of which are open to the public, and, whereas the council believes for the effective order of business in light of COVID-19 and holding meetings in hybrid fashion, in person and by video conference, and, whereas the council believes it is the best interest of performing county business as well as the, those individuals who choose to attend public meetings of the council to adapt standard policies and procedures for the administration of public meetings, and, whereas the policies and procedures adopted herein are intended to provide the general public with a clear and concise, consist of standards for public, for public meetings held by the council, and, whereas applicable rules regulating the conduct and decorum of members of the general public of which to attend said public meetings, and, whereas in order to protect general meetings, decorum, and foster more effective administration of public meetings, the council now desires to adopt standard policies and procedures applicable to the public meeting held by the council, according to the general parameters stated herein with. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the council of Lepore County. The Lepore County Council hereby adapts the following rules, which shall apply to all individuals attending public meetings in person or by video conference in Lepore County. That's number one. A, members of the general public and attendance at the public meeting of the council have no rights with references to the meeting except for otherwise provided by law. B, although members of the general public have no right to speak during the public meetings, the council provides a time for public comment of the agenda, during which time individuals may be given the opportunity to address the council. C, during any public comment period, individuals attending the video conference are requested to raise their hands. There is a raised hand function of the Zoom platform reactions tab at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The speaker will then be called upon when it's their turn. D, once called upon, all speakers shall first state their names, their county of residence, and the issue upon which they are about to speak. If the speaker is a person, he or she may only speak from a podium and must speak loudly and clearly into the microphone provided. C, I say E, each speaker may only speak once, and will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak unless a shorter period of time is set forth by the council at the start of the public comments period. Time may be reserved or yielded to other speakers, and once individuals finish speaking, individuals remaining, time, if any, will be waived. F, each speaker will be notified when their allotted time to speak is exhausted, and any speaker that does not immediately conclude their remarks at the expiration of their allotted time will be deemed out of order, and a speaker will be asked to stop. G, comments which are duplicative or repetitive will be deemed out of order, and a speaker will be asked to stop. H, I'm sorry, it was repetitive. Sorry about that last one. H, any speaker who is discourteous, argumentative, accused, accusatory?
Accusatory.
Accusatory, or insulting, will be deemed out of order and asked to stop. I, once speaker is deemed out of order for any reason, that speaker's remaining time, if any, will be forfeited, and a speaker will not be granted the opportunity to make any further comments of presentation. J, all members of the general public attending the public meeting will be expected to adhere to those rules, and any person failing to do so will be deemed out of order. Okay? The council are authorized to have sole discretion in request any person deemed out of order to leave the meeting, and once requested leave, the person must immediately leave the meeting room. L, in extreme cases, if person refuses to leave the meeting after being asked or to do so, the person continues to disrupt the proceedings in any way which is obviously hostile to the purpose of the meeting, the council may order that person to be removed by the members of the Lepore County Sheriff's Department. M, during his public meetings, the council will take all necessary measures under the circumstances to maintain order. In exercising discretion, the council will be guided by his judicious appraisal of the circumstances, including the conduct and decorum of members of the general public in attendance. Number two, upon adoption of his resolution, a copy of the rules stated herein shall be posted outside the meeting room and made available to the general public through the Internet website of the Lepore County Council, leporcounty.inan.gov. Three, the resolution shall be effective upon adoption.
Great. Thank you. What's your pleasure?
Questions?
Mr. Cunningham?
My first question is, does someone have the ability to block or mute our visitors on the Zoom call?
The administrator does. The IT administrator.
Okay. Does she have sole authority to do that, or does the council have input?
I respect the meeting.
She would, I would guess she would do as we direct.
Have we directed anybody to be blocked or muted this evening?
No.
Would it shock you if someone said they were blocked and muted?
Well, we have not directed anybody to be blocked.
Okay, and I, I understand that. So, my next question is, would it shock you if someone can confirm that they were blocked and muted?
No. Would, would it surprise me?
Okay. And then the resolution that was just read, we're going to remove somebody from a public meeting? Is that going to be the president's decision, or would it require a vote?
I guess it would be what, what we decide in this resolution. Because right now, it states the council, doesn't it? Mr. Cunningham?
I believe so.
Yeah, I believe so also.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
I believe it's a work in order type of a resolution. I believe that everybody should take their input and look, look at it and decide if there should be some, I, I have some disagreements, and I think, I'm sure other council members do, and so that's great. I think that if we collectively will have something that will be working, a workable solution, but we do have a new, with these Zoom meetings, we do have a new agenda that we didn't have in the past. So, we have to at least address it because...
Well, I agree. Thank you.
Right. So, was that a motion to hold it over?
Motion to hold it over.
I hand this up.
Pardon me. Was that a motion to table?
Table? Tape? No.
Hold it over.
Hold it for the next meeting, because this is a more, it's a two-step process.
All right. Motion by Mr. Yagowski. Is there a second?
I have, I have a question. I have my hands up, but I don't think you're, you're looking at the hands up button.
Let me get a second on the motion, then we'll come to the...
I'll second the motion, and then...
And Mr. Graham Marosa, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this, is this in our agenda? Was this put in our agenda?
Beginning, yes.
At the beginning of the meeting, there were items added and taken off of the agenda, and then we approved the agenda, yes.
Okay, so then, did they, see, I didn't receive this, so I haven't even reviewed this. And I'd like to review this.
Went out to everybody.
And then, secondly, I heard someone say that IT is the one who, is the one who goes out and mutes individuals? Or that's what it's going to be from this point forward?
No. It's the person that is running the Zoom meeting at home right now, I guess at home, but the IT director is the one that is controlling it right now. We could designate someone else. We could designate the auditor's office to control it.
Actually, Mr. President, in the past, we even had the attorney controlling the meeting. If she's not present, they're...
So, it just happens tonight, it's the IT director. So, it's not, it's not, we haven't designated that, so...
Okay, so then, do you think I can get a copy of this? I know we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have a second, we're gonna hold it over to the next meeting.
Right.
But do you think I can get a copy of this?
Absolutely. I thought, I sent it out to...
I, I just want to share, it was sent out, so I can't tell if it's the right email address. Sent out yesterday at 12:46 PM as an attachment, and I, I, that's what I pulled up, just to share, and that's how I was reading it today.
To cgramarosa@leporecounty, leporteco.in.gov at 12:46.
And there's the problem, because they keep on putting county instead of CO.
No, no, CO.
So, I think, we've been having quite a lot of problems with getting emails.
The email?
Everybody else's email is the same. It's leporteco.in.gov, but they keep on putting my email as leportecounty.in.gov.
No, this one went to leporteco.
I think, I think I got it right. I fixed it in my...
Yeah, it's correct.
It went out, it went out to everybody. I'll send it to you again. We'll make sure you get it. Definitely.
Mr. President, just...
We have a motion and a second. Are you still talking?
I was sent a question.
Okay.
A second, right?
Go ahead.
Just for your information, it'll change, but, but Joey Wensky was the co-host of the, just for everybody's information. So, so Darlene was the host, she was the co-host, she, she led some meetings. You're going to be, that was last year, so you'll have, you'll be the co-host this year.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah, wait.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to hold this over till next month, and hopefully all the council members get a chance to review it and give their input so that we can get this worked out. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. New business, consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for shared employee position in the county auditor's office?
County assessor's office.
Assessor's office, I'm sorry. There's an auditor on here somewhere. Replace position for the tax slash deputy office supervisor for the auditor's office, and replacement for correction officer position, residential coordinator position, field officer position, and program supervisor position for community corrections. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenauer.
Discussion.
Yep. Discussion. Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. President, in light of the fact that this applies to our hiring, do we still have a hiring freeze in the county, and is that why this is coming before us like this?
Correct.
I would, I don't think this is urgent, because there's no election this year, but in light of what happened at the end of this 2020, with the addition of employees and the removal of employees within the last month by lame-duck politicians, I would ask that we revisit our hiring freeze and maybe make an amendment so that the same thing that just happened a month ago doesn't happen again in the future. Doesn't have anything to do with this particular one, but it should be an amendment that we should be working on, I would think.
Right. So just, just for point of clarification, I understand exactly what you're talking about, but that department head that's no longer here had permission probably for two or three months prior to that, and chose, and don't, for whatever reason, busy with the election, I don't know what, but they waited to the end. So that permission was not granted at the very end of the year.
That's my exact point, is that our amendment should say that should an elected official be defeated the first week in November, actually, I would go back to November 1st. There should be no hiring or firing by an official up for election from November 1st on unless it's approved by a committee of hypothetically, I would say, the president of the council, the president of the commission, and the HR director on a unanimous vote, because virtually what it did is it tied the hands of the newly-elected official.
I get it.
And we had another one in just the opposite situation where an elected official that was defeated fired somebody during the last month of their tenure. It seems to me like we ought to have some amendment to our, I don't care whether it's going to be our hiring practice, or whether it's going to be an amendment to the hiring freeze, but we ought to get it in writing somewhere that we don't have this thing reoccurring the way it happened this year.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Mullen, Mr. Yagowski.
Mr. Cunningham, I guess, question or statement at least, which you came up, I do understand your point. A, we have the authority, and this would have to be to our attorney before we get that far with it, because we have the authority, because we have the budgetary control. I just, you know, just as our conference here mentioning to the attorney that we should ask how we have the authority under this, under your statement for elected or non-elected officials. That's a little different situation than the agenda, because I was, I was the one that introduced this some 15 years ago, 12 years ago, whatever it was, to have a hiring freeze, but we had authority under the, under our budgetary process. I don't know if we have the authority with elected officials. I just, as a mention for you to ask the attorney to look into it.
I would be more than happy to do that. Ask the attorney to look into a potential for a resolution or an attendant amendment to our hiring freeze with the council's permission.
Thank you. Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Rosenbaum.
I would just like to add that as part of reviewing it, to possibly put a timetable on it, so that the person has 60 days before they have to come back to the council, something to put some sort of mechanism in there to prevent someone from taking forever, because maybe they didn't need that person, and we shouldn't be replacing. So we, it's just an idea. I'm not suggesting this is what it should be, but just some sort of idea that there might be a time limit in which to fill a position before someone has to come back.
I'd be more than happy to serve on a committee with Mr. DiMartino on that matter.
Thank you. Make sure we make that happen. Is there any? So we're going to call for the vote for these positions that are here. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Establish the mileage rate for 2021. The 2020 rate was fifteen, 53.5 cents per mile. The 2021 state rate is 39 cents per mile, and the 2021 IRS rate is 56 cents per mile. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2021 state rate, 39 cents a mile.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski to go with the 39 cents per mile, which is the Indiana state rate. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gardner. Any questions? For clarification, Mr. Auditor, the current rate for the county is 53.5?
That was changed, yeah, it was changed. For some reason, some of the council members wanted to change that number, but I, it was just, that was the majority. We always kept the state, we had a lower rate before that, so.
So the motion is to, the rate for 2021 would be 39 cents per mile. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
I didn't get to the nay yet. All right. Master Auditor, would you call the room?
Councilman Yagowski. Councilman Garner.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Novak.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graham Marosa.
Nay.
Four nays, three ayes, motion fails.
So is there a new motion?
I'd make a motion that we establish the rate at 47.5 cents, which is the average of the state and the IRS figures, 39 and 56 divided by 2 is 47.5 cents.
47.5. Motion by Mr. Cunningham for a rate of 47.5 cents per mile. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Marosa and Mr. Rosenbaum. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, can I interrupt you?
You sure can.
Can we, in regards to the board appointments, I received an email from.
So did I.
You're aware of that?
About with the regional sewer?
Yes.
Yeah. I, we're going to have to.
We're going to have to revisit that at some point in time.
So for clarification, we've received, I received a text, and obviously the attorney received the notification, that the appointments that we think we have right now on the regional sewer and water district.
We do not have.
We do not have.
Correct.
None of these are expired right now.
That's, as I understand it, that's correct, so we need to look into that.
So the document that we received shows that they both expired at the end of last year.
Correct.
So.
But that may be incorrect. The document we received.
So we may have to, we may have to revisit that.
Correct.
Is that a question on physical, or the, the calendar year, or is that?
Yes, it was, it was 12/31/20. We were, we were given that information, but I was told that two years ago, that there were two folks that were appointed for four years that are not on this list. So I think that the list might not have been up to date.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you.
So we may have to come back to that.
Yes, Mr. Rosenbaum.
So I.
But Mr. Jones did pass away, correct? And he was on that board?
Correct.
So we're going to have to replace him anyways?
Unless he was already replaced, but I don't.
We're going to have to look into that.
Right. We don't, we're going to have to come back to that, because we're not quite sure, like I said, I just got a text message that said, we need to look at that. Mr. Rosenbaum.
Yeah, these Zoom meetings are very challenging when you've called on me and somebody else speaks out. I was going to bring up that we should retain if Mr., if the person who's deceased, and no, we have not filled that position, I do not recall filling it last year, I served on that board, and I believe that we should allow the new person to fill that spot until we find out when it's retired, or when that, when we get it corrected. So I believe that Mr. Dwayne Miller should be allowed to take that position immediately, and then we can find out when the proper retirement is. So if it's at the end of 2021, then that's what it is.
If there's an opening.
If there's an opening. I don't think anybody has a problem if there's an open.
Okay, so now there's a question whether or not there's an open.
The text that I got says that they don't believe there's any openings at all, which totally Connor Dix. I, I agree, that's what I don't understand.
Is it from the commissioner? That's why we need to look into it.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. All right. Next item is the request approval for LaPorte County Council's 2021 regular meeting schedule. You should have all received the calendar of dates.
May I read them aloud?
You may.
They are February 22nd, 2021, March 22nd, April 26th, May 24th, June 28th, July 26th, August 23rd, September 27th, October 25th, November 22nd, which is the Monday just before Thanksgiving. And those are the dates that we have for our regular meetings that are listed.
That's a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yagowski. Any questions or issues with those dates, with any council members? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Old business, we have none. Appropriations transfers, LaPorte County Sheriff requesting permission to spend from firearm funds for replacement of tasers in the amount $11,502.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a second by Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Rosenbaum. Motion by Mr. Yagowski. Are there any questions for the sheriff?
No, just, just a quick statement. This is a continual thing that's done every year, where we're constantly replacing what needs to be replaced.
Not every year, but yes.
When we need to, when we need to replace, it comes out of this fund.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for being patient.
Next item is LaPorte Circuit Court requesting permission to transfer funds in the amount of $5,000. Did it, what are they?
In the information we received, it was in order to pay someone for their services, for Mr. Kotman, for his services that he provides under a different avenue.
I think they do this every year.
And this is, mhm.
Right. Is there anybody on that would like to speak on that?
I can answer questions if you have any.
Is that, is that correct, Judge?
Yes, this is for facilitation where we do for children.
Right.
We've handled it different ways in the past, but I think the way that we've set it with the county is we, we add the 5,000, that person keeps track of their hours separately. This is an individual that comes in early and leaves early normally. On days where they do the facilitations, they don't, they don't leave early, and supposedly it's a, they keep track of all that.
Thank you, Judge. What's your, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by.
Second.
I'll second.
By Mr. Cunningham and Mrs. Graham Marosa. On the, is there any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is LaPorte County EMS, Andrew McGuire requests an approval to pay FTOs field training officers step-up pay when acting as management. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Andrew.
I did send out an email with a detailed explanation of this. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to review that or not, so I can give a brief explanation and then answer any questions that you might have. So we have two members of management on each shift, and we try our best not to allow them to take vacation time or time off at the same time, so we always have at least one member of management on at all times. But due to unforeseen things, FMLA, illness, COVID, this year especially, injuries, sometimes there is, that leaves us sometimes with no management on shift. And obviously, the job we do, it's imperative to have a go-to person at all times to mitigate small issues, large issues during the day. The administration staff's around, but with us running 24-hour shifts, like I said, it's good to have somebody be the go-to person. So previously, we always, always used a senior member, what we call a senior medic, that was always the go-to person. Well, these days, the senior employees, they don't want the responsibility, and there's no compensation for them, so they keep turning it down. We have FTOs, we have field training officers in the field, and they saw this issue and stepped up and said, we're doing it. They even said, we're doing it a year ago, starting a year ago, as long as I tried to come and get some compensation for them. And so we kind of looked at a plan, like Michigan City Fire Department has a step-up pay program that we looked at a little bit, so do a lot of other fire departments. So we kind of looked in, looked into the same program. And basically, what it would be is, we would compensate the FTO for, from their hourly pay to what their hourly pay would be as a lieutenant, which is our lowest level of management. And when we looked at the FTOs we have, it's a matter of an extra $2 on average an hour. We looked at April 2019 to April 2020, that's just the numbers we used, and we would have used this 11 times, which, given that pay increase, would equate to about $700. You know, we have that within our 100 account, we wouldn't need an additional appropriation, and this would be a great way to compensate those FTOs for stepping up and taking the responsibility of being a member of management.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Yagowski.
I truly understand the principle of it, but all it does is it's going to cause a tension between all the county, other county jobs that are available. People have to step up all the time. In my line of work, if somebody calls off, they call me up. I'm the administrator, like you are. That's our job. If people don't want to step up, I understand that, but it, but then they call the people that are, that are available. There's Highway Department, there's everybody else that steps up all the time, sick leave benefits, sick leave, call-offs, so on and so forth. I understand that your situation, it works, but I don't see how this whole county, it'd be a disarray about everybody requesting pay for every step-up job they do. And I think that's a normal thing we do in a normal administration, normal business a day that we occur. So I, I understand your principle of it, but it would put a kibosh, and it would hurt our whole system that we have for the rest of LaPorte County.
And Mr. Yagowski, respectfully, you know, our, our department is unique, you know, what we do and the hours we work and what we deal with, so.
I get called all the time, trust me, 24/7, seven days a week. I'll show you my phone, like I have two phones.
Well, I, I understand, but when comparing to other county departments is what I'm saying, so.
Like the Highway Department, I'm saying, there's very trouble, there's storm visitors out there, they're working, somebody gets hurt, somebody goes on sick leave, it, this happens all the time. So this would, this would cause a disarray to our system we have set up for the whole
See any other comments?
I have a comment. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead.
I just feel that you're taking, and if I understand this correctly, you're asking employees to stand up, basic employees that were, and they have to go, and they have to become managers at that given time, and they're not being compensated. And I understand what you're saying, Mark, but this is an unusual situation where we have COVID happening right now, and people are, that department seems to be short all the time with employees already, so we're just asking, or he's just asking for a little bit of compensation in order to become, to stand, step up and become a manager at that given moment?
And I understand your question, Connie, but it happens right now, there's a snowstorm coming, Highway Department is going to be devastated. Let's just say we get another 12 inches or 22 inches of snow. Guess what? That department is overwhelmed, or the Sheriff's Department's overwhelmed. We have, we will catch situations like this all the time, where we will have situations like that. But again, the administration then has to step up and answer the calls, whatever it happens to be. Again, I get called all the time, I understand that. I've had to step out of meetings here because I get called.
So just point of clarification, this is when you're asking a normal employee to assume a supervisor's role. So it's not, it's, I get it. But I just want to clarify, this isn't, this is when you're asking employee to work above and take on additional responsibilities outside of their normal work schedule, or their normal responsibilities outside of their normal work schedule or their normal job, so they're filling in for a supervisor or someone, that's what this is.
I understand.
And also to clarify too, our FTOs do not get compensation, there's not a pay scale for FTOs. They're doing this for comp time or, you know, as, as, you know, just helping with the training program, stuff like that. So there, there's not, it's not a level of management currently, so. You're exactly right, they're not getting anything for stepping up and doing what they do.
Thank you. Mr. Molenauer.
Uh, yeah, more of a statement than a question, I guess. I, I'm, when I read this, and I, I didn't get a chance to talk to Mr. McGuire, I wanted to today and I forgot, but when I was sheriff, and I remember, I think there was two, I know two of you were on the council at that time, Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Gardner, and we had corporals, which they had the rank already of corporal, in the jail, sergeants and corporals, and those corporals weren't being compensated, but when a sergeant was off, which it sometimes normal, on his normal days off, or at times like Mr. McGuire just said, sickness or whatever, they, they, well, they did step up, but you know, they weren't being compensated, and they do have the responsibility of, of maintaining a shift and, and making those decisions that need to be made. And, and my feeling is, is they should be compensated if they're taking on that responsibility.
So what is, what decision?
$700, is that what, I couldn't catch all that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I ran from April 2019 to April 2020. This would occur 11 times and would equate to just over $700. Now, with COVID, it would happen a little bit more than that, but I've tried to pick a period of time that was halfway normal and not, not during the COVID times. I'm hoping we're going back to some normalcy relatively soon.
So, so my question to Mr. Molenauer, was the corporals compensated?
Yes, the council granted that request when I went to them and explained the same thing that Mr. McGuire is doing, that they, they had those responsibilities and they weren't being compensated. And to this day, the corporals are paid an additional, just like, not as much as the sergeants, of course, but an additional amount to kind of put them between a jailer and sergeant, is what we did.
Any other questions or comments? Clarification, he's not asking for any additional money.
Correct. Okay, I'd like to just make a few observations. I'm, I understand the concern that Councilman Yagowski has brought up, that we don't make this a countywide program. And it's a big concern that once you let it, the cat out of the box, you can't pull it back in. And so I would almost like to discuss this a little further with other departments, maybe with human resources, to see how far this happens and to take a look at some other departments before we yea or nay this, because I'd like to give the opportunity for something that I agree with, and I do agree with compensating people, to make sure that it's something within our means and for everybody. And I, I don't want your people shortchanged, but I think we, in light of a concern, I'd like to table it. And so that would be, no one else has made a motion at this time, so then I will make a motion to table this.
Alright, sir, a second.
And for, and I, the concern is to table it for a month, is what I'm just looking for.
So there's a motion to table to our next meeting and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Thank you. Thank you. We'll see you next month.
I'd like to make one comment if I could on that.
Not about that.
I'd like to maybe work with Mike on, with HR and discuss that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Molenauer.
On their lives on anyway, but I'd like to be.
The matter's been tabled, sir.
We'll, we'll talk afterwards, we're done with that.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Maintenance requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General Fund to remodel existing storage building at 500 Monroe Street in the amount of $230,000. This is the item that we had the workshop on, I was going to say last month, but last meeting, so.
Mr. President.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Yagowski. Real quick, a point of order, just if you don't mind. We know the presentation, so what the question was by Judge, or sorry, Shaw Freeman was, Attorney Shaw Freeman, was that he believed through, that there was COVID money available for it. We were, that's the only thing that we have not received back except for different opinions. Do we have a solid opinion on the COVID money?
We have received all of our COVID money back.
No, no. We have money that we still could have, if the last meeting, Mr. Freeman said we had money available for this, that was a que, that was a question that was left up yet to be discussed. We didn't finish that at our, at our council, at our meeting because we were getting more information. I did not see that information.
Mr. Yagowski, did you see the email that Ms. Winski sent out on kind of the CARES Act summary of what's come in?
What's come in, but I'm asking, is there additional money that we could use for this project? That was left open.
No, you'd have to, you'd have to appropriate out of the 3.6 million. She, she reports there's 2.7 million still left. And there is, yes, it is our opinion, there's a portion of this project, that portion that would be used for PPE storage, where you, yes, you could use a portion of that, of the CARES Act money for this, for this particular project.
My, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, chime in either Attorney Freeman or, or Treasurer Winski, that as we, as we put this on the agenda, that the request is from Riverboat or General, and that the General Fund monies would ultimately be, to whatever degree it's deemed COVID, since that money is in the general, in, in a sense, that that's, that's part of what's there. But Joey, do you want to clarify that, since you're on the committee?
That's correct. The CARES Act money is within the General Fund. So you could use all of it for the, you could use, take half out of the CARES money and half out of the General Fund additional money if you wanted to.
I believe it's different.
Did I make that clear?
Strong.
No.
Okay.
We earmarked X amount of money for CARES Act, and so, but it had to be run through the General Fund, but as Joey indicates, yes, you could for this project, since a portion of that building is for PPE storage, you could use a portion of that to pay for a portion of this project.
That's what I, that was my mis, my understanding at the time, so I, I relinquish the floor, but that was my understanding at the time.
May I?
We just, we just don't know what portion of it right now, whether, or could it be like half of it even? Is that what Joey meant? Yeah?
Yes, yes.
Sounds good.
Isn't it true ultimately that Joey, that this is essentially either way the same pool of money?
Correct.
Can you repeat that?
Isn't this in essence either way the same pool of money?
The general, it's all put back in the general fund.
It's all in the general fund. There are, as you know, there are specific accounts within the general fund that contain certain or specified amounts of money. For instance, the CARES reimbursement money was mandated by the state to be put in the general fund, but we have to account for that CARES reimbursement within that fund. So you could take part of the money, excuse me, say half, let's say half. You could take half of the money from the CARES reimbursement fund, and you could take half of the money from the general fund. Let's say you could, you want to take it from the CAGIT portion of the general fund. You can take it, it's all in the same general fund, but you have to specify which accounts that they come from. Is that, is that totally unclear now again? It, it's very confusing, but it's all within the general fund.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is help you build an audit trail, so that if later down the road, as inevitably will happen, when somebody at the federal government says, let's go back and audit all these local entities and how they use CARES Act money, this way you've got an audit trail to say, yes, we use CARES Act money for CARES Act and COVID purposes.
Alright, thank you.
I agree with that.
And by the way, I think that's what the state had intended also.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
We filed to obtain money, 3.6 million, just under 3.6 million, for expenses that we already paid. So when we got the money, it reimbursed us, and that money goes back to the general fund. It's not CARES Act money anymore. It just put it back into the general fund of what we used. We've got to stop calling CARES Act money. It no longer exists as CARES Act money. It is back in the general fund.
Mr. Rosenbaum, I, I.
You've spent the money for payroll, you've spent the money for other expenses, for PPP in the.
Well, the memo that. Okay, but let me just say this. The memo that we received from the state said that we do have to put it in the CARES, it has to be specified in the general fund, and it has to say CARES reimbursement. Now, what you want to spend it on is another story. You know, I, I see what you're saying, and you, you can probably spend it on what you want. However, it's my opinion, and I don't have anything in writing, that we would be better either way. The memo also said that it has to be, and I think I said this, but I'll say it again, it has to be specified that this is CARES money. Then it can be appropriated for whatever use you need or want by the council. The, the commission had to put it into the general fund, appropriate it for using it wherever they want. I don't feel the same way that Mr. Friedman just said, because they have changed their minds so many times on this reimbursement money, I think that we would be prudent to make sure that we use it for CARES purposes. I, I think that's the way I wanted to say it. So, so, yes, I think that you can use this CARES reimbursement money.
I'm done.
But let's be cautious, because if we're audited by the federal government, and by the way, that happens every year, the federal government comes back in and audits us after the state audits us. I think that, that for right now, especially since there's been a change in the government, that we would be smart to use it for a, one of the same purposes that we use the CARES Act money for in the first place. Did I, did I explain myself?
Yes.
Mr. Yagowski.
By the way, good luck to the federal government, if they're going to check everybody's, every state county in the United States, because they, they can't do a lot more things, they surely can't handle that one. Stables, I, I guess now what we're asking for, let me ask this question. I mean, I'm still going to vote my way in my conscience on this one, I'll be, I think that we're comfortable with that part. But we have not, the count, the council has not seen an audit, because there's still money being spent, not for this, I'm talking, but even for PPE or whatever it is. Hopefully that's coming out of other counts right now, and we're, it's, we're being back to where the council is leading this agenda. This is no longer a 30-team group, it's the council. If there is no money, like, like you said, Mr. Rosenbaum, respectfully say, I appreciate that, then we need to see where we're at. I have not seen any audit figures from we start till now. So that, we, somehow we got to know where we're at and where the money was placed. I'm okay with it. Again, Ms. Winski stated, federal government's going to come and inspect us, so I'm okay with that. But I don't know. But I do believe that everybody, including Mrs. Winski and Mr. Freeman and other people that are on the committees, state that we put money back in a general fund, and I have no problem saying, let's use half this money for only purposes of the general fund, just to make it legit and say it's going to this building, because we're going to store PPE. I have no problem with that. I don't think it's an argumentative point at that, but as long as we put on a piece of paper it's going for PPE, I would feel more comfortable with it. PPE storage, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion. I think what, what, way I'm getting it is, is we can't pay for the whole $230,000, because we know that the CARES Act is mostly storage, and that's going to be a good portion of that building. So I would like to make a motion that we pay, and it's coming out of the general fund, but it's specified which, but CARES Act funds for $100,000 from the CARES Act and $130,000 from the regular general fund, if that makes sense. For $230,000. That's my motion.
Sir, second.
I second that, thank you very much. I'm sorry.
I second that, Mr. President.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Oh, dang it, you caught me. Sorry. So we have a motion and a second. The motion is $100,000 out of the, what we deem the CARES Act money, which is in the same account, and the other $130,000 is just coming out of the regular general fund for a total of $230,000.
I will clarify.
Question?
Sorry.
What?
I'd like a question, it's like, so what if Mr. Friedman and Mrs. Winski decide later on that we can take more money? Are we going to come back later?
That's what I asked for.
Or just allow them to change the motion for that to happen?
Right. That's why, go ahead.
I think, I think that really this is the same money, like, again, Joey, clarify if I'm wrong about this, but this is the same money, it's just we're going to show on an accounting basis that 100K of it is, is CARES, CARES related, 130 is, is not for, in our accounting system. Is that, is that wrong, Joey?
Yes and no. We, you still have to allocate it, you have to, you have to, you, you have to make sure that you designate, that you're taking it out of the CARES account within the general fund. Yes, it's all within the general fund, but I would have to show you on a ledger what I'm talking about, I guess, and.
At a later date.
Maybe we can, yeah, maybe, maybe we can do that later.
This motion is more consistent with the notion of, of, of doing it and allocating it that way and building a paper trail, so.
So if the council deems at a later date that they could have used more of what we call the CARES Act money, then we could reallocate at a later date? It's all in the same account?
That's all I wanted to know, correct?
Is that?
Sure.
Right, right. Alright, any other questions or comments?
Sorry.
Yeah, I have my hand raised, and I don't know who's watching to, to, to check for hands raised, because I want to interrupt anybody.
Tony, watch for hands raised.
You know, I had first asked Joey a couple weeks or a couple days ago for a list of how that, how much money was in there and, and where it was being spent at. I've yet to receive anything back in email for that. Secondly, when we did the walkthrough with Mr. Levandowski on the building, he had said that the building would cost about $140,000, but not to exceed $230,000. And now we're going with the full amount of $230,000. So, you know, it's a bit confusing of exactly, you know, have we gotten bids on this? Do we know for sure that that's exactly what it's going to cost? You know, how are we, are we just throwing a dollar amount out there and we're just going to vote on it? And then if, if they run it up to the 230, then great. If we can keep it down to the 140, then that'd be great too. So how are we doing this?
To, to answer your question about the 140, if you remember, I, Councilman Molenauer was with us also, the 140 was what it was going to cost to do the building across the road. There was a lot of discussion being talked about at that time, and that was the, where the 140 came from. As for the, as for the $230,000, we have started getting quotes on, on different things. And actually, some of the quotes from my budget have been, my budget was a little bit low. So we've got, the buildout, I had figured it like $49,500, we're up to $52,000 on that. Electrical, I had figured somewhere in the vicinity of $44,000, we're closer to $50,000 on that. So the roof repairs are going to be in the vicinity of $60,000. There's, the wind, the window price is at 33.6. We, we're within about $13,000 to $20,000 of what my original budget is, that I, that I budgeted, but I haven't gotten all the quotes in on that, to answer your question. So yes, we have been getting, reaching out.
The 140, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But we have, I have been reaching out so that we don't have a delay on getting prices on everything.
Okay, so the 140 you're saying was for the garage, because we were in the main building?
No, it was for.
We were in the two-story main building, so the 140, you were saying the building adjacent? So the $140,000 is what's actually going to go into the garage? So the $140,000 is what's actually going to go into the garage?
No, the 140 was for the building that we had looked at across the roadway that we were going to purchase for, at one time, the discussion on that. That was a purchase of $185,000 and it would cost $140,000 to do the roofing, the heating and the electric work that needed to be done in that facility. Because you had, you had asked me
Okay, so we're going to approve 230 tonight, but then we're going to be able to see bids for the $230,000, correct?
He's, he's already got prices.
Yeah, I've, I've already started getting prices on that.
So we, you actually have bids for them already and they're tallying up to $230,000?
We're, we're tallying it up really close, but I haven't completed all the bids yet, correct?
But you're comfortable with 230?
Yes, yes. We may be, we may come in less. That's what I'm hoping for.
Treasurer Winsky, do you have a?
Yes, I, I would just like to answer Mrs. Grammerosa. On January 20th, I got an email from you. It came from countygrammerosa@yahoo.com and I answered it and I also included all the council members. I don't know who got it and who didn't, but I did answer all of your questions.
Okay, I'll check that email.
Okay, I just want to make sure I
So what was your
And I would ask the other council members that if you didn't get that email, please let me know because it contains a lot of information that would be pertinent to this discussion.
What is the, what is the rough balance of the CARES Act, what we're calling the CARES Act money?
Two, $2.7 million.
Is that, is that pretty accurate?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Cunningham.
I could see if my math is correct here. Mr. Levandowski, had we bought the building across the street for 185 and spent 140 to fix it up, that's $325,000.
Correct.
We were still going to have to spend $60,000 to fix the roof on the building you're talking about now.
Correct.
So now you're up to $385,000. Probably going to spend some money to fix the windows eventually, so you're up to about $400,000.
That's, that's correct.
Your guys can do a lot of the labor inside this building. We're, secondly, had we done the first project, we would have taken a building off the tax rolls, correct?
Correct.
Reduce some income to the county. By doing it in a building that we already have and then eventually we're going to have to spend some money on to fix up whether we do this in there or not, we're going to do it for $230,000. Let's say it's 250, it's still $150,000 less than the other project and renovations was going to cost us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So any other questions or comments regarding this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Lepore County Adult Probation requests an additional appropriation from Riverboder General Fund for Criminal Rule 26, two positions in the amount of $101,000. Mr. Steve Ira, or Judge Thorman.
How are we tonight?
Judge Freeman, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have several team members with us tonight, so part of the team that was working on Criminal Rule 26 and put it all together, as you all are aware of. I wanted to follow up with three questions that were asked me at the workshop. The first one is, did all 92 counties comply with the mandate? I do not have firsthand knowledge of what counties were, but it was a Supreme Court mandate, so I'm assuming they were. I was talking to the sheriff today and he said the Indiana Sheriff's Association has assured him that every county in the state is complied with it. And then the other thing is Prosecutor John Lake at the November 2019 council meeting brought up the fact that if we do not follow this rule, then we're going to be facing some serious litigation. Jurisdictions around the country already are being challenged on this issue about pretrial release and they are, the litigants are, are winning. So, and I think Mr. Mullenhour asked about how other counties were faring compared to us. I reached out to those counties. They said it's premature to really put out any data and their teams have opted to keep that information to themselves until they can sort through various issues. And then I think Mr. Cunningham asked about how many days do we keep people out of our jail on the calendar year? And I want to remind everybody that this program isn't designed to save money. That's not what it's about. It's, but it's to evaluate a person's risk, not what resources they have to get out of jail. Historically offenses were, people charged with certain offenses were given a bond due to the level of offense without taking into consideration their risk. And when we're talking about risk, we're talking about failure to appear and getting rearrested. So Criminal Rule 26's focus is just that, relying on the risk. So we did some number crunching and found that 272 defendants from January 1st to May 22nd qualified for that, for Criminal Rule 26, all the arrestees. Of those, 187 were released in under three days. So that's less a half, less than half of a year and arrests were reduced due to COVID-19. So there's really no way to say how many people we kept out of jail. But we talked to Sheriff Boyd and found out that the average stay for 2020 was 41 for felonies, 41 days, and 18.8 for misdemeanors. In 2016, it was 47.7 for felonies and 16.3 for misdemeanors. So we did some crunching with those numbers and daily cost to incarcerate somebody in a little poor county jail is $32 roughly 17 cents. So if we average that 18.8 day application for all those people who were eligible, those 187 people, and you multiply it times the $32.17, that is a savings of $190,000 for the whole year. So I don't know if we answered, or if that answers your question specifically about how many people that we keep out of jail. There's really no way to discern that, but we can make some correlations. Judge Freeman, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not really. I think you pretty much covered it. You know, those, those are our best estimates, looking at, at the information that we have. I wish we could give you absolutes, don't think we can, but hopefully that, that gives you some, some parameters of, of an answer for you, both Councilman Mullenhour and Councilman Cunningham.
I agree 100% that you can't give us absolutes. I think you've done a wonderful job of giving us some estimates. And, and secondly, there's some costs that we can't put a dollar sign on as far as keeping someone's job, keeping a family, keeping a family intact. There are a lot of other causal effects that by getting them home earlier could possibly save a family unit, could possibly save a job and so forth. So if you were, I wasn't looking to save money. And Mr. Ira said we're not trying to, it wasn't a goal to save money, but I think we can justify to the taxpayers that spending $100,000 for these two positions is pretty, pretty safe when we saved approximately $190,000 on what we would have spent to keep someone in jail. And if it was just in the ballpark is all I was looking for because I know there are additional expenses related to the family that are important. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to thank you both too for doing that. And I just want to, not really a reminder, because I know I don't have to remind, but that we keep pursuing any possible grants.
Absolutely. We always have that in mind, sir. We will. We'll keep, we'll keep working on that. Thank you.
Okay.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion to fund it from the general fund, thinking of Mr. Santana at this time, for $101,000.
I have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there a second?
Is that the COVID portion of the, no, just kidding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Terry Gardner and Mike Mullenhour?
No, I didn't. I didn't say anything, but I will if you like. Second.
I thought I heard too. I'm sorry. All right, so we have a motion and a second to take the 101 out of general fund. Is there any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
I have no problem supporting this. I know that different people at the courts looked at this thing as, of course, getting people out of jail. The AIC, Indiana, Indiana counties looked at it as also saving money. So they're hand in hand. I don't, you know, we can all make it all pretty and paint the pink, the pig pink, but that's okay. But it does, it goes hand in hand. But I will still disagree like I did from the get-go. And I know Steve's shaking his head, he knows what I'm going to say. I disagree that we should have bought into the programs that other counties did that I talked to that do not interview everybody. I will still challenge you on that one. But that's, that's up to me as a county councilman to challenge you on.
Thank you, Mr. Yagowski. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item is the COVID Committee Treasurer Joey Winsky requests an additional appropriation from Riverboder General Fund for COVID Vaccine Clinic in the amount, COVID Vaccine Clinic from CARES reimbursement to COVID fund in the amount of $600,000. Madam Treasurer.
Motion approved.
Second, with conversation.
Motion by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Mr. Rosenbaum.
Yeah, what people don't realize why this amount of money, it's costing us about $100,000 to run the clinic on a monthly basis. So we're looking to fund it for six months. The Health Department is sending bills down to the state to try and get reimbursed as they have been advised to do. No money has come back yet from the state. They did receive some money to initially start it, to get it going, but we're hoping that we will get it funded in the meantime in order to keep everything rolling and because we are going to designate this, as we described before, from CARES Act or to CARES Act, so that if there's any other reimbursement in the future, we'll be able to track it.
Thank you. Well said.
And I, I'm sorry, it was coming out of the general fund?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, the next item in the county planner was removed from the agenda, if you're looking at the agenda. So we're going down to Lepore County Office of Community and Economic Development, request additional appropriation from Seated for annual budget in the amount of $220,000.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
I'd like to make a motion, but we've done for the last, at least 12 years, we appropriate 110,000 at this time from there and then they'll come back six months later like we've done in the past.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mullenhour. Is there any questions? Comments?
The question I have is when they come back, they're going to give us another report. That's just one way we stay up to date. I appreciate Mr. Yagowski for remembering that.
Yep. Thank you. I just want to state that this last year's been an incredible year with the economic development and the things that we've done. Lepore County's been landing jobs and doing a great job and, and I know there's more things in the future, so kudos. You guys, you guys are doing more in the, this is my seventh year that I've been here. It's, it seems like we've gotten more done this last year than, than I can remember in a long, long time. So kudos to you guys. So with that
One other question?
Yep.
In light of the fact that we have the Michigan City Economic Development, Lepore Economic Development, explain to the taxpayers why this isn't a duplication or triplication of services because you're all working together anyway, but you have separate units, correct? If you explain that to the taxpayers, I think it would be helpful.
Yes, Mr. Councilman Cunningham. And it's a great question. There is a high level of communication between the three entities, that is, the Lepore Economic Advancement Partnership, the Economic Development Corporation of Michigan City. We, we operate in all the unincorporated areas. So if, if you had, if you were to look at the map and look, we can't lose sight of the fact that Lepore County is the second largest land area county in the state of Indiana. And if comparatively speaking, looking at other agencies, they typically are structured in a very flat and vertical manner with a lot of job responsibilities. So we, we wear multiple hats. The key is if we have a prospect that is, we're unable to serve, we're communicating with both Burt and Clarence to find a compatible space in their community as well. And we have been working, it's, it remains at the top priority to, to find a space and keep them first and foremost in Lepore County. So it's not unusual that we are working cooperatively towards a prospect. It happens at least monthly. We'll be communicating and working cooperatively on trying to land a deal. If for some reason it, anytime a prospect, and Councilman Yagowski's comment of earlier has to run an uptick, when these prospects, they want to move immediately. So if we can find them a compatible amount of square footage in one of the communities that already exists, we are pushing that hard and we're sending and we're, we're offering our assistance when we can. And they are doing the same as well when they have the opportunity to assist. And there, they don't have an adequate facility.
What's good for any of these units is good for the whole county.
Without question.
Absolutely.
And, you know, to look specifically, there's going to be a high percentage of, of those that will become employed at either Lippert Components Incorporated or Corsicana that are coming from the, the cities of Michigan City and Lepore. So it
Win, win for everybody.
It raises all boats. It sure does.
Yep. Thank you, Tony. Any other questions or comments?
And we significantly appreciate your support.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lepore County Engineer requests additional appropriation from Seated for Meadowview Estates Study in the amount of $17,000.
He's on.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, this is Jay Sullivan, County Engineer.
Oh, there he is.
Do you have any questions on the request?
No questions, just a statement, Mr. President.
What's your, Mr. Yagowski?
This has come up and down numerous times, as you know, last year, this year, or last year, throughout the year, I apologize. Look, this is the same question that I would make at any other time. We are going to ban, we're going to take care of people that develop[1647.88]
We are going to ban, we're going to take care of people that develop these subdivisions. Nobody in the subdivision goes after the owners, and then they put it back on the county's responsibility. Everybody's got a little bit of a water issue, which we'll be taking care of, the same thing, are we going to go in and, and do these same audits and same engineering things, so that we take care of all Lepore County's type of situations? There's water everywhere, and we know that, we've gone through these battles before with people, and we've always declined these, but for some reason, politically, somebody wanted to jump on this board, on this bandwagon, and we need to go after, tell these people to go after the owners. I don't care what, who they are, their family, their heirs, or anybody, so this does not belong here in front of the council.
So, is there a motion?
Motion denied. Second.
Second.
We have a motion to deny by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Great.
Comment?
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I, if there's a problem that the county needs to help put in a drain, we know the problem, paying $17,000 for somebody to repeat what the problem is, to me, is insanity. We should start using this funds to help fund an answer to the problem. I've spoken with people today to go over this, I did not speak with the engineer, I didn't feel like I needed to, because I was getting enough information elsewhere, that, that this is going to require a drainage pipe, and that we can extend it further down the road and help pick up another problem on one of our highway, one of our county roads. So maybe that's what we should be looking at doing, rather than spend money on a survey. Thank you.
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Molnar.
Question, more than anything, I guess, don't we need this engineer study before we do that? Because I, I know we've kicked this can down the road before. Mr. Yagowski?
I can answer that, if, if you'd like.
Yes, Mr. Cunningham.
That 17, yeah, this is the engineer, this is Jay Sullivan. The study is intended to determine the extent of the drainage pipe up to Kohler Drive, there's going to be a 20-inch pipe up Collins and Novak Drive, they don't know how far north to extend it. The option one plan did include a pipe, a 20-inch drainage pipe, that wrote, that was, was going to be installed parallel to the road down to the ditch from the subdivision. And this study then will determine how far north in the subdivision that pipe would need to go to make sure that there would be, you know, to get all the drainage, surface drainage, subsurface drainage out of the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'd like to add that, you know, a lot of this laying a pipe can be done by our Highway Department, so this is not something that needs to be sent out to a third party at high cost. So as our engineer, I would think that you would be able to help us decide some of these things.
Mr. President.
And if not, we'll need to bring in, you'll have to tell us what you need if you can't help make that decision.
Mr. Yagowski.
In the past, I know, in the past, I know that Bob Young, I know in the past, I know that Bob Young had different positions, but Bob Young had started out with the engineering part of this, where he went around, they actually did this type of work, you're absolutely right, Mr. Rosenbaum. We, this was work we did, and now we seem to forgot how we do that with some bridge work and things of that nature. We have employees that, that are able to do it, but we sometimes tend to jump on other things. This is an important one, yes, we needed to attack, but we've been attacking these things throughout the years. Again, they've been getting some complaints, it comes back to us, it's because it's politics, that's all it is.
And so the general consensus that I'm hearing is, they don't have a problem with installing a drain out there, a drain that, something that's needed to assist the neighborhoods or do anything, we, we've never had an issue with that, I think it's the fact that it's, it's just a, that it's a study. So with that, is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion fails.
This, this was to deny that funding, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
Yes.
We're going to take, we're going to take a, a brief recess for three and a half minutes, we've got to discuss the next two items on the agenda, so.
While you're doing it, Mr. President, real quick, so we're going to, just for your help and us, the waving of the hand you push on that selection thing, they're going to install a screen here for commissioners and council, so that you're going to be able to see away, because we cannot see the, I, I'm trying to help, I was trying to help Randy out, because we can't see that. So there'll be something installed for both meetings.
Right.
Hey, we're learning, so we'll do the best we can.
And the, and the raising of the hand during the middle of the council meeting, you can raise your hand to public, can raise your hand during public comment, but we're not going to call on you during the actual meeting, after public comment is closed, so we're not allowed to. So with that, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Next item on the agenda is Fairground Management Event Corporation, FMEC, requesting appropriation from Riverboat or Seated for improvements at the county-owned fairgrounds in the amount of 125,000.
I'd like to make the motion for $125,000 coming from Seated, and this is the annual amount that's been going in there for the three plus, the three years that I've been involved with the county council, and before that, that was the amount going in.
For the infrastructure repair.
Mm-hmm.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by?
Mr. Gardner and Mr. Mullenauer.
All right, Mr. Gardner and Mr. Mullenauer. Any questions?
Again, this was just referred to as the, Mr. President, sorry, as the annual amount, we're, we're not asking for additional, like now, later on, we're just asking for this right now.
Right, we're going to wait till next month to ask for more, so. I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Yagowski, and your support on that, I'm just kidding.
It's also my understanding that the FMEC is currently working with, on a permanent, long-term solution, not permanent, but a long-term plan, master plan, so that this way we will know how much money and be more reassured of what's going on there. So we're not going to be spending money one year, and then spending money to fix something that we just did the year before.
Correct, correct, we've, we've.
Thank you.
Got some good plans out there. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Maintenance requests additional appropriation from Seated for emergency.
Not Seated, from CCD.
CCD, I'm sorry, I said Seated, we've been going too long, for emergency repair on the jail elevator in the amount of 195,000.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Yagowski and Mr. Mullenauer, I think everybody knows what the issue is. Does anybody have any questions for the sheriff or for Larry?
It would just be a good 30 seconds to explain what this is for.
What's happened to South Elevator, it's pretty much the equipment within it is out of date, and they cannot get it repaired anymore. They're, so what we're doing, we're doing an upgrade to all the electronics and sensors and everything, so it'll keep, it'll keep this elevator going for a long time. Right now, it keeps going down about every month, it's been down now since Thanksgiving, and we've been trying to get the actual part repaired, just so we can get this up and going for them.
This is in the jail?
It's in the jail, South Elevator operates for all the kitchen and laundry.
Right.
Service.
And we've also had employees and inmates trapped in the elevator before.
Right, definitely. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. That is, concludes all of the items on the list, comments from the council or council attorney. Council members?
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
I've witnessed, I've witnessed a lot of this.
Hang on a second, go ahead, Mr. Yagowski.
I witnessed, I witnessed a lot of discourse lately, in both the meetings of the commissioners, with the council, with the, after the election here this last time. I've been privileged to work with both parties, I worked with Terry Gardner right off the bat, and we worked hand in hand. I came in and I had John Jones, a Democrat, and I had Mark Lovell, a Republican, they took me under my wings and showed me how to do my job to the best of my ability. I always believed that attack on any individual is an attack on this body, whether it were commissioners or council, combined. Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell stated here just recently, President Biden is our president, he will have his agenda, he will have meaningful debate, he will, we will all have disagreements, but we will work together for the betterment of this union. I would hope that the differences that I've seen go away, I think that we are a good team, and be a good team, we have to work, we have to act that way, so we show responsibilities. I mentioned earlier that the papers don't cover well, and I can go into it, debate I'm not, but the problem with social media, though, is, it's always one-sided, you can't always debate and put out, you can put out statements, but you can't work, you can work to your favor if that's what it happens to be, but I believe that as a bodies, we can all work together to make ourselves look better and be more efficient as government employees.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just like a correction, I, we went back into those emails, and I did send the email from my county account, and the answers were sent to a private account. So I just want to clarify here on the meeting that that, in fact, was an error.
Okay.
It was sent to, not to the account that I had sent it from, thank you.
Thank you.
I would have a comment if I'd be allowed to.
This is council and attorney.
Okay, very well.
Comment.
All right.
So unless.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Cunningham.
I would, it's probably too late because we miss new business, but maybe not because we're not spending any money, could we have some discussion as to whether we can start our meetings at 6 instead of 6:30?
I appreciate it, I was going to bring that up, yes. So how does the council feel if we move the meeting, start time for the meeting to 6 o'clock versus 6:30?
Mr. Cunningham, is that what the agreement, we've, she asked some of our council members, is that agreement with, if we have a workshop, they will, we will work the date, the hours back, so the meeting may start at 7 o'clock instead of 6 o'clock?
Absolutely, I understand, our meeting will always follow the special meeting.
Because it affects at least two of us, Mike, I don't speak for Mike, it affects Mike and I, so I would, if we could at least, if that would be the promise, that'd be fine.
We don't want to cut into anybody's work schedule, I mean, that's not the intent of that, so. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Anybody have an objection to that? You're good? Everybody's good? And then, like you said, if we have a workshop, we just back it off, we would not push a workshop to 4:30. Any other questions or comments? Auditor Stamos, did you?
So we are, I'm sorry, are you voting on that?
No, that, we're just going to do it, so it's 6 o'clock. No, I was just asking you if you had a comment about the meeting.
I'm sorry, you were, you are soliciting my comment, or you're not soliciting my comment?
I am, at this time, I'm asking if you.
The comment that I would simply have is that it is a responsibility of all of us, especially this body, which is the one that I more directly serve, but serve both bodies, to defend the financial integrity of the county, and where I view and perceive that the financial integrity of the county is endangered or threatened, I have a moral responsibility to the citizens, and I will do as is necessary to defend the financial integrity of Lepore And that includes the way decisions are made, when those decisions appear to be thwarted very regularly.
All right, all right, we're done, we're done, that's, that's enough, we're not going to go down a dirt road here, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Yagowski, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, motion. Mr. [inaudible].